All right, you good Jake? Everyone good? Beth, you ready?
Yeah.
Sarah? Good evening, everyone. It's Tuesday, June 24th, Select Board's meeting. I just want to state that this meeting is being video and audio recorded. Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge the allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands united nations and for now individual liberty and justice for all.
So, we're gonna pause for a moment of silence for Jeff King, who is a Board of Health member who recently passed unexpectedly. He was the husband of our assessor Patty King. Okay. Ron, do you want to do the march?
Fifty-nine cents. Just throw something at me Jake. Uh, the next is fiscal year 2025A payroll in the amount of $1,456.45. The next one is fiscal year 2025-26, an accounts payable warrant in the amount of $121,181.50. Next is fiscal year 2025-26 payroll warrant in the amount of $330,323.22. And lastly, we have fiscal year 26-01A accounts payable in the amount of $680,469.88.
Thank you. So, I want to make an announcement about the road. Sorry for the condition of the road, but it is a work in progress and it is getting better. Our highway department's been working down there very diligently. So, thank you Kyle and Scott and the rest of the help that's been down there. You're doing a great job. I've gone down several times now and it looks great what you're doing. So, thank you to the rest of the highway as well. Pass that along. And then I also want to make notice to a lot of the residents that are noticing our roadside are not being mowed right now. The roadside mower is down, but it is scheduled to be fixed. We have parts that are coming in and as soon as that's done, the roadside mowing will continue. We're doing it basically on a temporary basis right now with a small, almost inadequate mower, but it's the best that we have and it's getting a couple feet of width so that most of the knot wood or bamboo has been knocked down. So, it has made the roads more passable. Right? That's fair to say?
I said it a little better.
I'm sorry?
I said it makes the line a little better.
Yeah. And you've got at least three or four roads done up until now. Thank you. All right. So, I entertain a motion to take things out of order based on Beth asking for a reorganization in the board. So, I'd like to do that first in case the board changes. We would then have a new chair. So, it's all you Beth.
Great. So, um, although I may need to talk about some of the items that preceded this on the agenda, just on a very high level.
Well, no. No. If you, if you, if you want to make the motion, you make it. If it gets seconded, we'll talk about it. If it doesn't, then we're gonna move on.
Okay. Usually, we at least give little.
Discussion happens after a motion is seconded.
Okay. I'm still gonna make one quick statement about why I put this on the agenda. Okay?
Make it brief if you don't mind.
I will make it brief.
Okay.
Okay. So, I put this on the agenda because I have concerns about how both some of the voted items from our Select Board in meetings prior to the town meeting were handled. And then how while those actions were deemed not to be eligible to be executed because the warrant wasn't open, we then removed items from the town meeting warrant in meetings prior to it.
You sat in a stray, way off topic. So, make the motion if you want to make the motion.
So, the motion is that the board reorganize tonight.
Do you have a recommendation of how you'd like to make the motion?
The motion is whether or not we'll reorganize. We'll start there.
Sarah, you have a second? I'm not gonna second it, so if you don't have a second, we're gonna move on.
Great. Second for discussion.
I'll second for discussion, but limited discussion.
Okay.
Okay. Let's have discussion.
So, again, it was related to how some of the items were represented. Um, what could be and couldn't be changed on the town meeting warrant before the actual town meeting. Uh, and I don't, I feel like there's a lot of instances where you're currently making decisions without the full consensus, either, not even full consensus of the board, but a, an empowered vote of the board.
You're starting to get way off topic Beth. We're gonna be subject to an open meeting law complaint. The fact that you're talking about things that transpired, right? While you were the chair, because you were the chair left over, you were the chair for 10 days when there was no talk about opening the warrant. You were left over from May 5th to I believe we met May 15th. There was no discussion about it. So, if, if you have a concern, it's on you. Because once we got to the point where you stated you wanted to open the warrant, I would've liked to have opened the warrant. I spoke with the town clerk about it. He said absolutely not. There is no time as it is. The people got the booklets for the town meeting the day before, in, in some cases, and in some cases, the day of. So, there was literally no time. And you took great opportunities to bash me and Sarah when you weren't here to bash us that we didn't open the warrant. I literally overheard you at the town, at the school during the night of the town meeting. But I want to say Beth, you were the chair for 10 days when that thing could've been open. So, take some responsibility and don't just blame others.
Okay. So, you're saying that no items were removed from the warrant when the warrant was not open?
I'm sorry?
You're saying that no items were removed from the town meeting warrant when the warrant wasn't open when you were chair?
I believe that's the case.
Okay. So, I agree that we removed items, but I talked to Mike, I talked to Ron. There was no agenda item to open back the warrant. I'm pretty sure the warrant closed when Brad was chair still, if I'm not mistaken.
So, then we couldn't technically?
So, I kinda questioned the same thing. How could we take something off but not add something? But the direction didn't really come from Rich. I'll defend him in that case. That as far as I asked too, not just Rich, I asked Ron and I asked Mike and they both said no. And I asked Karen. And Karen said no just due to printing problems. And I agree, I mean, on Rich too. I mean, most people didn't get to the day of or the day before. Not saying that that would've changed.
And speaking to Mike, he said it would cause a minimum of a two-day delay that the booklets would not go out in time. So, I'm sorry for the loss you've had. I'm sorry and I know that you couldn't be here. And on several occasions, I made it clear that Beth wasn't at a meeting because she had a loss. I made it clear again that Beth wasn't here this evening because she missed, a flight was delayed. Like, I have represented you when you haven't been here. So, I'm gonna make that very clear. So, I think it's inappropriate for you to go behind my back and Sarah's back. And if you had a problem with it, you should've brought it up with Ron that he could've brought it up with the board. Because, because I made it very clear Beth, when I became chair, that you would be able to put anything you wanted on the agenda. The 10 days that you were chair, Sarah and I could not put anything on the agenda. You told Karen and Ron that nothing can be put on the agenda unless it's gone through you first. So, I didn't know if this was a little test of yours tonight to simply reorganize the board. But have at it. You can put it on every week if you'd like. But you will have the ability to put anything you want on the agenda while I'm chair. So, are we done? Cause we are really strained.
Also a point, I think it's a communication problem too. I think that Ron needs to tell all three of us everything instead of picking and choosing what he's gonna tell one of us and not the other one.
Well, I think we've gotta be really careful about that because what you just described regarding me communicating to Ron and Ron communicating to you.
It doesn't need to come back verbatim. It doesn't need to be delivery.
It's not even really concerns. I just mean in general updates, like about the, like about the warrant. Like, I think Ron should've reached out to the three of us and not just Rich and I and said, hey, the warrant couldn't be, you know, the warrant couldn't be added. I think that he should've reached out to all three of us individually and said, hey, just let you know the warrant can't be changed according to Mike.
So, and I guess I'm still confused and we can put it on a future agenda. If we, if we couldn't add verbiage, verbiage from a meeting two weeks prior that we had discussed, how did we remove an item the week prior?
That's a good point Beth. So, I'm not perfect and I'm a pretty new chair of the Board of Selectmen, but I will make very clear that I will be as consistent as possible. And if I did something wrong while I was chair, I'll take full responsibility for it.
Cause there's a, there's a cognitive dissonance there about how we were conducting business.
I don't know if it was cognitive because I wasn't, I wasn't certain. I rely heavily on Ron and I talk to Ron every single day, sometimes two and sometimes three times a day. And I, and while I'm talking to Ron, I'll tell Ron, make sure you check with Sarah and Beth consistently. I consistently ask Karen to reach out to you to see if you, I say, has, we're coming near the deadline for the agenda. And I'll say, Karen, have you heard from Beth? She'll say, in most cases, she said no. I said, please reach out to Beth to see if she has anything. So, and I will continue to do that.
So, again, I do want us to be very careful because some of the questions that I have gotten from Ron sound like a straw poll. Okay? So, it's one thing if we're asking a question, it's one thing if we're either conveying information directly with no opinion to be offered, okay? Or, really, that's the only thing that can be done in between meetings. Or solicitation for, is there something that you want on the agenda? Okay? But some of the communication and exactly what you're describing quote-unquote should be done or the communication that should've happened before something went on the agenda, I don't find appropriate.
So, here's the problem. Our hands are basically tied with the open meeting law, right? Here, here you and Sarah kinda finding fault with Ron that he's not communicating with you enough. But, but at the same time, you're stating that, well, if he does, it's a deliberation and it's clearly illegal. So, so, so let's just be very careful. Like, if you have, if you want to know something going on, check in with Ron and check in more frequently. I'll check with Ron, like I say, up to three times a day. And I'll currently, I'll constantly ask, hey.
Careful though, cause I am literally in the town hall every single day on my lunch, so.
Yeah. Well, I run across you, but if you're in a room, I leave.
Exactly. But be, be careful because I talk to Ron every day and still I'm left out of some of the communication. So, be careful.
Well, I think it is, it's a slippery slope based on the open meeting law, frankly, and having a three-member board.
Well, it means that sometimes we have to go slow to go fast, okay? So, if there's something that really should be a vote of the board and maybe we need to have a, a separate conversation that will put on the agenda about what constitutes an item that requires the quorum of the board and what the chair is empowered to do and what the department liaisons are empowered to do. Okay? But right now, clearly Sarah doesn't feel like she's always properly included in whether it's in the information or in the decision-making. I feel that some of the ways things have been handled have been very selective and only certain things get executed in between cycles of meetings. Okay? I, I think we need to be very considerate of what is the will of the board and not just the will of the chair.
So, so I will be more cognizant of that, but at the same time, I would ask you be more active because there's a lot of times that I'll speak to Ron and I'll say, have you heard from Beth? Does she have anything? Nope, 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 nope. Now, I know you got a lot going on. I know you've had some loss. So, but prior to that, it was very similar. So, if you want to be more active, have at it. I, I'll meet, I'll meet twice a week if you want to be more active to that degree. I'll do whatever it takes, but, but I don't want to see you trying to beat up on Sarah and I, one, because you've missed the meeting, or, or two, you didn't agree with how we voted. Right? Cause we talked about that already. I clearly said, you know, you, you were upset that you didn't become the chair and, and you put all your eggs in Don's basket and Don didn't win. So, and at that point, I would've been odd personnel. You made that very clear the first night after the election. I made it very, very clear. So, anyway, we are totally strained.
Have you heard of the term gaslighting?
I'm sorry?
Have you heard of the term gaslighting?
Yeah. You're the one that talked about it that night. You were the one that was hurt that you didn't become the chair. You made it very clear. Take it, watch the, watch that meeting. Go back and watch it. So, I'm gonna call for a vote. Did you make a motion?
I did make a motion.
What's your motion?
The motion was for us to reconsider.
To reorganize?
To reorganize.
Okay. So, do you, do you have a recommendation how?
No. That the, the vote is, are we gonna reorganize or not? It's similar to move question.
Well, then, Sarah, do you have, what's your vote? Are you voting to reorganize with Beth or, I'm assuming Beth is a yes?
No.
And I'm a no. So, doesn't care. All right. Number two. Sure. Come on up.
Nothing against Steve. Make sure we set the timer. Sorry Steve.
No, it's okay. Steve Carmen, 44 Town Farm Road. I feel like I've been in this position a few times and the aim is to work together, right? You're a three-member board and all of your perspectives and opinions are valued. And what I've heard in this meeting right here is lots of negatively charged accusations. Just be mindful of that. So, if you're saying to look back at other meetings and say how so-and-so conducted themselves, please look at tonight's meeting and look at how you've conducted yourself as well. Think about the tone and I mean that sincerely. Thank you.
Anyone else before we move on? All right. Number two. Recap regarding contract cancellation of the town hall improvement projects. Beth, I'm gonna give you the floor as well.
Great. Thank you. So, I do have some questions about, and Ron, I guess these questions are for you. And I don't know, I did talk to you about it some, but I wasn't really clear on, uh, cause I had received a communication from you prior to the cancellation about, hey, what do you think about doing this work? Um, that the town hall improvement committee had voted on that we, I think, had previously approved months ago as a select board for them to, to do some refinishing of the floors, right on the second floor. And it, it seemed to kinda come out of nowhere. I know we had, I know we had voted as a board to have purchases over $500 go through you at the end of the year, but it, it seemed really out of step with how we have typically empowered our volunteers and our committees that if they're given functionally a charge, and I get that we probably have the charge and it's under a different item here, uh, that it says, hey, what the Select Board directs us to, directs the town hall improvement committee to do. However, the usual customary way that we had managed that, and granted, every board has a different character about it, was that their committee would vote what the next project was gonna be. Typically, it came before the board to verify that, uh, that was indeed the path that we were gonna take. And it was only after that we had that alignment that we even made those contracts. Right? So, did we miss a step with that particular project? Or was it a case of just because it was the end of the year and we wanted to, you know, hold back as much money as possible for free cash purposes that, that we were canceling that contract? When it had been something that everyone had been aligned on for months that this was the type of work that we were gonna be doing with the budget allocated to town hall improvement?
Correct. I, I believe the way it, I guess, it evolved was town hall committee had that as one of their potential projects for fiscal year 25. Um, there was some work lining up a vendor, costs and so forth. When it came to the attention of the board, at that point then the board had, had identified priorities as being the, the windows. So, at that point, that's why, and I believe that was the discussion that occurred last, last week as to why that particular project, the flooring if you will, was canceled. That the $5,500 and change was better spent in a higher priority, was to set that aside for window replacements, repairs.
We presented both of those things. But it was taken off the agenda.
So, can I back, backtrack a little bit Beth and sorry to interrupt, but we got a notice from Ron the other day, or I don't know if it came to everyone or it was just me, that he said the town treasurer was extremely concerned about monies at the end of the year. We were over on quite a few of the budgets and that we were gonna revisit the $100 spending limit based on the overage of several budgets. So, that's what was said to me and that's what we discussed, right? That was part of the discussion.
Correct. And at, at a town hall improvements committee meeting, I did bring that to their attention that the town accountant Lori had indicated things were getting very, very tight and that a spending freeze was possible. At which point, the town hall improvements committee, obviously, they, they prefer that the projects went through, but they were understanding if the money's not there, it's not there. So, they did realize at, at that meeting that it was potentially gonna be canceled.
And what was the day of that meeting?
That was a week before. That was a Wednesday.
Any other discussion?
Yeah. I'm trying to, I'm trying to tie the link between the only priority is the windows. And I guess the presumption was if the money was returned from this year's operational budget, it would be in free cash and available for the window for the following year.
I think that would be my presumption, right? And that's what I would push towards. However, I, I want to make it really clear that in a municipal building, these electric heaters that are being used on a daily basis during the winter months, not only is it not safe, but it's not legal, right? So, I got a notice from the Board of Health stating that the Board of Health office couldn't get above 62 degrees, that she was literally freezing. And when I saw that the bids for the floors come in and the contracts be, it was stated they were signed, I knew the charge wasn't to just give the bids out that way, that the, how the charge is, that it comes before the Select Board. But secondly, then I was told that, you know, we had to do this right away. And I asked Mr. Taft, I said, Don, were you aware, did you get an email about the spending freeze? He said, not only did he get the email, but he was in the room when it was talked about $100 and then went to $500 and then went into place. So, that was several weeks ago. And then last week, when he came to move those forward, I didn't, I, I was not willing to do it based on the condition of our windows, that we, in my house, we would never sand the floors before we secured the house, right? And then secondly, I was told on Wednesday after the meeting that Sharon Mahoney volunteered to pay for the floor sanding and the town hall improvement committee volunteered to do it so that she wouldn't have to spend the money. Once I heard that, I thought that was absolutely out of line, that the town hall improvement committee offer up the taxpayers' money to the room that she's gonna be in, that she gets free rent and is gonna make a contribution to the electric. So, whenever I found out that she was willing to pay for this, I was kinda upset about it frankly, that she should've just done that on her own. The town hall improvement committee had no right to offer up the taxpayers' money to do that.
That was only a portion of the full project though, right?
But that's my point. Yeah, yeah. But, but, and it was like roughly in the $1,200 range. But however much money it is, the, the amount of money is not the principle, right? It's what it's going to and it's taxpayer money as well as securing a building. So, I felt strong about it for multiple reasons. So, and it's nothing against the town hall improvement committee. They've done some great work, but we knew the charge, like the charge was out of line. The spending freeze that was in place, the, the way the contract was to be given out versus the coming to the Select Board ahead of time. When, when the carpet was done in here by the town hall improvement committee, and not very long ago, a couple months, they came before us and we okayed the project and then they went ahead and did the task and, and they did, they do everything they're asked to do and more. So, for those reasons, I couldn't get behind it. And, and then Don asked, why, or what are we gonna do with the $14,000 of their budget for the next fiscal year of '26? And I said, well, it's my hope that we use that to secure the windows along with the earmark of the $25,000 that Donnie Berthume has kept for the town. So, and at that point, I think he was really mad and resigned on the spot. So, come on up.
Don Taft, 20, Lane 21. First of all, uh, the town hall improvement committee did not volunteer to pay for the, we're doing the floors in the green room. We had approved some other work, which was putting locks on the door. And that was done at no cost. And Sharon asked if we would consider re-appropriating that money to cover part of the cost of the floor. We didn't volunteer, it was asked if we would do it. That's number one. Number two, the town hall improvement committee has done a lot in this town. And to have you sit up here last week and say, I want this and I want this and this is me, it's not the board. This all came from you. There was nothing that said the board had voted on this. The board approved this. It was, this is what I want. This is what I see as happening. This is what I want to have happen. We want to dedicate all of your money to go toward the windows. I had told you previously that I would work with you on the windows and I had asked several times about that and they never heard anything back from you about that. But if you also think that putting storm windows in an unheated room is gonna make it any warmer, I think you're wrong.
Don, I've been in the building business my entire adult life. So, let me tell you something. When I could see the curtains moving in the room and they put up a piece of plastic, it instantly helped. So, you're wrong by saying that if I put up a storm window, it's not gonna make a difference. So, you're dead wrong on that. Secondly, Sharon literally said she would pay for it. Jacob told me he paid for the locks out of his own pocket.
That's correct.
So, for you to say you didn't volunteer up the money, well then how did it get to the point from Sharon saying she would pay for it to the town hall committee saying they're gonna pay for it? And you were ready, and you signed the contracts that you knew that you shouldn't have signed. You knew. you knew that you shouldn't have signed, you knew that wasn't the charge?
No.
So how did we get to that point?
I just explained to you that she asked if we would reappropriate that money that we had already approved the locks. We didn't volunteer to do it, we were asked if we would consider reallocating that money.
The locks were...
So, I guess, what was your reasoning for, to say yes? I guess, is my question.
Why?
Yes, why?
It's, it's a Town Hall, part of the Town Hall facilities, part of it is going to be used for the studio, joint use of the studio. It had already, use of that had already been approved by the board, not just one person, it was approved by the board previously. There's a contract, there's an agreement, that's why we approved it.
So, Don, the locks were roughly $200, right? So I, I'll trade every day of the week with you, I'll give you 200, you give me 1,400, every day of the week. That was the taxpayers' money that shouldn't have gone to that. Sharon Mahoney has a free room upstairs, I don't know anyone else that'll get a free room in this Town Hall, and all she has to contribute is towards the electric bill. So when she was willing to pay for this, out of her pocket, the Town Hall Improvement Committee either should have said, absolutely not, are we going to spend the taxpayers' money? Or they should have said, let's bring this before the Select Board. But under no circumstances should the Town Hall Improvement Committee be so generous with the taxpayers' money. And secondly, when I said, I, 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 like you keep saying, Ron, Don, we're talking about fiscal '26, we're not even there yet, we're not even there. You threw a temper tantrum and quit, and we weren't even at that point.
You said...
You asked me, if I expected that your whole budget would go to the windows, and I said, I would expect that it would. And that really irked you, and that was...
And then you said, that's, that's what I want, that's what I want to have happen.
That's what I'd like to see happen.
That is not up to you, that is up to the board, let the board make the decision.
And we will, but we haven't got to that point, Don.
That's correct, you haven't got there yet.
So you quit before we got to the point?
I did, because of the attitude.
We're not in fiscal '26 yet, right? Come on up.
Mary Lou Knight, Lane 20, 21. The agreement with Sharon Mahoney was that she would pay and we would reimburse. It was never she volunteered to pay. This is a joint room. It's used for the video, it's used for the studio, it is not specifically radio station.
I'm going to ask you to pause right there. Sharon, I would, I mean Karen, I would like you to recite the conversation you had with Sharon Mahoney on Wednesday morning, when I was in your office, listening to the phone call.
Well, Sharon called me Wednesday morning, she wanted to know, she wanted, basically, that she heard that the contracts were canceled, and asked me to confirm that. Can you hear me? Okay. Sharon called me in the morning, she said that someone held her the agreement to refinish the floor, and the radio station was canceled, she asked me to confirm it. I did do that. I told her that due to money restraints, there's a spending freeze, and thus, two of the contracts were canceled. She told me that she intends to pay for the floor project herself, and it will proceed as planned. And I, if I recall correctly, she said the contracts are going to start next week, which is this week. She did explain that originally she was going to play for, pay for the floor refinish, the floor refinishing from the Apple Country radio budget, I guess, but she said the Town Hall Improvement, I don't know if she used the word volunteered, but she said they said they would pay for the project out of their budget. I, I guess I used the word volunteered, but maybe she, she just said it. But I told her I would pass along her information that the project will move forward with her footing the bill.
That was after the fact, that the contract was canceled the day before it was supposed to start. The original agreement was that she would pay, we would reimburse. That was the original agreement, I believe it might even be in the letter.
That we, we would reimburse her?
Correct.
Why?
Because it's a joint area, it's part of our video conference.
Okay, that means half the money should come out of the PEG account, and the half of the money she should cough up and pay for, it's her studio.
All right, my other point, my other question is, is the windows a new issue? You've been on the board over a year.
Slightly over a year.
I haven't heard windows until two weeks before the meeting.
Well, you're not watching the meetings, because I was working with Lindsay about a grant for the windows, Ron can attest to that.
And I reached out to Donnie before we even started running to get the grant based on the windows, so...
So you can, you can make personal attacks on me all you want, Mary Lou, but the fact of the matter is, I've been talking about these windows for a long time, and we couldn't even apply for the grant until we got through to the New Year. Ask Beth, Beth, you were during, you were here during our discussions last year when we talked about the windows at the meetings, and grants, and how we could pay for it.
So we did talk about the windows and grant money, we've never entertained it being the sole focus of all funds associated with our Town Hall.
That's correct.
Okay, so, so it's never been, we've never said that we're going to exclude all other worker activity within the Town Hall in order to execute windows.
That's a fair statement, but, but it's still my intention, and I can't do anything without the support of the board, but to Don's point, it is my intention to spend every money that we get to secure this building, so we stop paying the electric bills we're paying, we stop paying the oil bills we're paying, and we can warm the people up and give them a safe environment to be at. It's not, it's not even legal to have someone in this building. I, I work outside, I don't, I, I'm moving around, I can generate my own energy. Sitting at a desk, doing typing or filing, I can't even imagine how the women here are doing it, when it's in the extreme cold, so...
And I guess the question is, most of the conversation, though, has been around the upstairs windows, we haven't spoken about downstairs.
No.
Are we looking at doing both levels?
No.
Because most of the people are working on the first.
So, so the reality of it is, my intention is to do the double hung windows immediately. Those things can be done with a thermal pane glass without storms. The storms that I talked about are possibly in this room, and certainly on the second floor, in the big room. But every window that has offices that are similar to a home style window can be replaced with a replacement window that would have a triple pane glass, that would be really efficient. So, I'm sorry, I think I cut Sarah off.
Yeah, you did. Um, now, I lost what I was going to say. Oh, if we somehow, some way, could we hire somebody, find a grant, something, do some research, maybe to figure out what windows are a priority, what windows aren't, something along those lines, I guess.
So I think actually now we've got to put this on a different agenda.
Yeah, we can put it on a different agenda, but can we discuss it, I guess, at some point, if we're going to keep talking about the windows?
But here's, here's the thing of it, right? It sounds like, Mr. Shafie and Mr. Jeff, the way that conversation went down, probably... Yeah, the, the way that conversation went down, there should have been, and this is, you're the chair, if you need to call a meeting to get a decision of the board for something like the, hey, we're going to go ahead and cancel a contract, certainly it would have been more appropriate to even put it on a, on a short-term agenda and actually have that discussion before...
Beth, I can't, I can't put it something that the Town Hall Improvement Committee's going to bring to me, I can't put that on, right? So if, if Mr. Taft had reached out sooner, if he, there was no, I, I don't believe it was clear that in the contract, that it was going to happen the next day, and as it turns out, I think it wasn't the next day, it was the second day, right? So we were told it was happening Wednesday morning, right? And it, and it wasn't supposed to really happen until Thursday morning, but the fact of the matter is, I can't reach out to someone that's bringing that forward. It would behoove them to reach out to the Select Board to kind of pave the way for it. So, and again, I know this is now almost personal between Mary Lou and Don, but the fact that a matter is, the whole thing lacked communication, and I feel like I can definitely recover from this, and I can go on to say that you've done good work in the Town Hall Improvement Committee, and I believe you've been there for the last seven years. So I think it's a shame that you quit, I wished you wouldn't have. If you ever want to come up again, you would have my vote to be on the board again. So, but again, you can hold all the grudges you want, but I think it's something that I can clearly get over.
Can we move on? Anything else?
Jeff, do you mind coming up?
And can we put it on the next agenda, Karen? The windows.
Jeff Clark, 101 Brunel Avenue.
We're going to limit it to two minutes, so just...
Yeah, two minutes. He has the timer, he has the timer.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Sorry, saga pointed out.
No, 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 but I apologize, I just came out of the advisory committee meeting, but I was at this other meeting, and I don't, not sure what, what transpired today, but there seems to be confusion about as far as whatever the process was for this particular year, and then the coming year. I think, I'm not sure why the whole window thing got so blown out the last time we were, you had a Select Board meeting, because if that's something that's important to you, then that should be in the coming budget cycle, talking with the Building Improvements Committee, maybe a joint meeting, whatever. But I think we sort of mixed two different things together, which got, I think, you got, if I can speak for you, out of, been out of shape, because I think they sort of say, well, geez, the Building Improvement Committee is going to be disbanded, you don't need the Building Committee Improvement because of the, you want the windows. It just, it got totally out of control, where I think there should have been two discrete issues. If the windows are important, then fine, let's go ahead with the next budget cycle and do the grants or whatever in conjunction with the Building Improvements Committee, and whatever's going on with these other two small contracts, fine, you resolved it, but...
Well, I think your point is right, I think we could have worked together on it, and Don did ask me about it, and I said that I have a couple of different vendors willing to meet here at the Town Hall, but they haven't got back to me yet, we don't have an appointment yet. I talked to Don about that, and, and I don't know if he felt like there's a competition between him and I, I think we're all working together for the same cause.
But please, please, guys, just, every meeting I've been to in the last couple of months, I felt very uncomfortable. I keep coming up here and saying communication is important, we got to keep the tone down because everyone has to work together, we're trying to make a better town here, but, I mean, if we're going to start raising the level of acrimony so quickly, we're not going to get anything done. And I just wish everyone would just take a deep breath and back off, and, you know, punto, as they say in Spanish. Just let's try to be professional and try to think big picture as far as how do we compromise? We don't want to lose volunteers like the Taft, Don and Mary Lou, or, I don't know what exactly. So I'm sitting here, and all of a sudden, things just went, you know. I've been to a lot of these meetings, and you guys got to figure it out somehow, sorry.
Thank you. Come on up. Sorry, I don't remember your first name, I should know it, but I apologize.
Sean Mulligan, 17 River Street. You know, I'm really dismayed to see this, you know, in short order, it seems, you know, through some kind of misunderstanding on the budget about pretty small dollars that are improvement, that are an improvement to this Town Hall, I don't think anyone would disagree. You know, you've escalated this to the point, or someone did, to where we're losing two important volunteers who have done a lot for this town. That's disturbing to me. You know, people aren't going to volunteer, you know, if people put up nasty stuff on yellow signs, but we can't do anything about that. We can do, but we can do something about this. We can do something about this, and I'm speaking right.
Sean, Sean, please talk to us, Dave, please contain it.
Yes, and, and, and that's, you know, I'm really sad, for whatever reason, this has escalated to that point. And, and I'm with Jeff, let's, let's try to tone this down, every meeting seems to be awfully contentious.
Sean, if you might, you may want to respond, but I, I want to say one other point that I brought up, are the floors on the second floor need to be finished? Absolutely, they're, they're down to bare wood.
Okay.
But Brenda Karen has concerns in her office from the mildew that's in the basement. We haven't addressed that yet. We haven't addressed in Karen Trainer's office, the mildew concerns in her room, right? So those were some of the discussions that came up.
Could have those discussions, absolutely.
But we did, we did, and it got out of hand, and I don't know exactly...
Mr. Shafie, quick question.
I'm sorry?
Quick question.
Sure.
What happened with the money that we had voted regarding doing the ventilation downstairs, the way Bruce Clark had said we needed to, relative to the mildew issue? I thought there was actions taken under the current budget as well.
There is, and we've been, I've gone down with Paul, Don Taft, then I believe Al Jones, who else went with you, Don, down into the basement, or got some of those fans going again? Was it just you, or did you have help?
Well, that's exactly, that's exactly what I wanted to make sure to get on record.
When I say nothing's been done, I apologize if that offended, because that's not, that's not the point. The point was, when I say nothing's been done, Brenda's floor has still not been addressed with the mold and mildew issues, as well as Karen Trainer. Yes, you did get the fans going and circulation, so I misspoke, that has been done.
And we sealed, opened, and tested, asked, we asked to do.
Yep, but Brenda, Brenda has concerns...
And the other things we were asked to do was get the dehumidifier, the wind dryer, seal the floor, and then, you know, the steam was in the police station because of the penetrations, because I had a steam leak that was falling down. That's the only part of the basement that had a seal, to fix that one small period, it needed a rest of it, it did not make sense, so the Town Hall Committee said, that's not something to be focused on.
I think the big problem is, there's simply not enough money to go around, and to prioritize where the money goes is really the big problem. But floor on the second floor that's not finished, to me, would be the last priority. The floors that are above the basement with mildew and mold issues at, would be a higher priority, in my opinion. So again, I think we need to have more dialogue about that, the Select Board could talk more about it, but...
And that's exactly what we did, replacing the floor, because it was, there were two air quality studies that said it was mold. Last week, you mentioned about two offices, a plant that we were nothing about, who also asked, personally asked us, kind of approval to put plastic, get quote for putting plastic flooring in three offices, which we did, but the contractor said he does not recommend that, he recommended putting in carpet in there, create mold, prices that we never heard of.
I would never recommend carpet over a mildew basement on this first floor. A vinyl floor is not going to absorb the moisture in any way, shape, or form, or the mildew, or the mold. So to me, it's just a difference of opinion, how we move forward, but...
These are details we're talking about here, and we do have a committee for it, who, you know, who puts in time.
I do, I do have a question, actually, it sounds like the Town Hall Improvement Committee supplied to you the vinyl flooring and carpet quote, did it ever wind up on the agenda for us to review?
It never got to me.
The floor is about, the two floors, one for the snap together vinyl flooring at one price, and the price, and he's, he said in order to do that, he would recommend underlaid, that's why it was higher than the carpet, and then the carpet was the second floor, both closed, that one floor was both closed, right, on the floor.
So I don't recall seeing that. I will ask Karen to look for it, so we can revisit that as well.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Yep. So I just, but I, I just wanted to acknowledge that work was done, and then it sounds like the action was in our court, and perhaps I missed it for the 10 days I was here.
I don't recall seeing it either.
So...
Hi, Bob Ayers, 12 Lincoln Street. Little bit of history, I've lived in this town my entire life. I was a Board of Selectment Chair, I've been on the Board of Health, been on the Police Department, I've been on the Rescue Squad, my wife has been on the Rescue Squad, she's the one that started Lewis Field. Again, I've been here for 67 years, since retired. I've decided to come back into the town and see if I can help. I'd like to second that gentleman's motion. Please, please, let's all start to communicate here. This is the problem right here, right now, we're not communicating, people are getting bent out of sh... We're not communicating, people are getting bent out of shape, and there is absolutely no need for it. As far as I'm concerned, from what I've heard about this, there was a spending freeze, that spending freeze was overridden by a certain department, and the selectmen said no. I would say to you, please, don't abandon the town, you've been here, you've worked hard, don't let this get to you. Talk to him, talk to the board, please. This is the problem with the town of Brookfield, everybody gets bent out of shape and they walk away. And I will tell you, I have never seen this town so dysfunctional as I saw at the last town meeting. And the department heads should be ashamed of themselves by going up and amending their budgets in the middle of a town meeting after they've already been decided on. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Dave Holcraft, 26 Allen Road. You know, I've been on a lot of the committees in this town, and I've been outvoted on a lot of committees, I've been, you know, disrespected on the committees, I've been a chairman of the advisory planning board, and when they don't go along with me, I don't go throwing a fit, I don't resign, I don't yell and scream, I just take, I take, okay, we got a board, and that's how the board, that's how the board voted. Same with the select board. Now, the last boards we've had here for, I don't know, six, seven years, everybody just goes right with the flow, they all just vote together, yeah, whatever. And Beth was usually running the train, and the other two we had here, they just went along with it. Yeah, now we have a board that's decisive, and they're thinking for themselves, and they're trying to do what's right for the town, and they're going to speak their own minds, and that's what they're doing. And you other guys out here, you don't like it, because they're disagreeing with you now, you don't get Beth helping you out, okay? If people disagree on the boards, that's the way it is, that's the way we have committees, we all take votes. There's five of us, nine of us, we come to some kind of a conclusion, but we don't throw fits. You guys are throwing fits over nothing, nothing. Just, just your work together, and we'll move forward. And that's the problem here, you guys are all just throwing a fit over nothing, okay? We're trying to improve the town, so we all got to work together, everybody.
All right.
All right, we moving on?
Yep. Item number three. Kyle, do you mind coming up? Award fiscal year 2026 road materials bid.
It's two, is it?
Number two.
Well, I changed it to number three.
Oh, three, yeah, you changed it to three, yeah, I got to keep track of this. We're jumping.
You don't have to read them, or just take the item.
Sorry to put you on the spot here, Kyle, I know you don't like this line like it, so just give us your decisions on what you'd like to do with the.
Or lowest bidder, whatever.
Yeah.
I recommend going with low bid for asphalt, mass broken stone, 93.17 per ton. They also came in low bid for milling 1.5 inches, 3.12 per square yard. Full depth reclamation, low bidder was Murray paving and reclamation, FDR cost 3.25 dollars per square yard. Those were the three lowest bidders, and that's who I recommend going with.
Okay. All right, entertain a motion to accept this contract.
Motion to accept the recommendations of the highway superintendent for the highway road materials contract.
Have a second.
Second with discussion.
Okay.
I just want to say that I do have concerns about person or the company that is bidding, but, or that we award, that we are awarded bid to, but I'm going to trust Kyle on this and go with it, I guess, so.
Okay.
That's all I got to say.
Have you worked with mass broken stone before?
No, I reached out and did reference checks.
You did, okay.
Yes.
And I know they've got the town bid on multiple occasions, so, okay. Beth, anything?
Do you, do you know when's the last year we used them?
They've had our contract for the past couple of years, so.
Okay.
Mollasses Hill, Race Corner.
Okay, great, thank you.
Late, I think the.
Late, base go.
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Kyle, you're welcome. All right, town administrator status report, departments, committees, Ron, you'll take the lead.
Yes, Mr. Chair, as the board had requested, I've, kind of, I'll call it a rough draft, because you'll find it in your, in your packet, with the town administrator report, as well as supplemental reports from the, from Karen, the administrative assistant, as well as the municipal clerk, I did this kind of analyze, as I said, as a rough draft, to see if the format was of the liking of the select board, and if the format, the format as well as the content. I literally, it's a stab in the dark, and I am open to suggestions to however the board would like to see. As you can see, I kind of took a bulleted format with kind of a title, and then a brief sentence or two description of what, what that activity was, and if you want more, I can certainly provide that, if just bullets are, are okay, I can provide that as well.
Do you want to take some time to mark this up, and we revisit it next week?
We can, although I do have some quick feedback if you want it.
Sure.
One of the things that I found very useful in this type of status would be to provide both kind of the status, which is what this represents, and then, but make it like a two-column document, maybe flip it the other direction, and then the next actions. In some instances, it might be complete, in some instances, it might be that there's some particular follow-on or some particular suspense. I think that's more useful in terms of trying to manage workflow.
So next step, if you will.
Correct, next step, and if next step is none, because it's completed, that's fine.
Okay.
Right? Or next step may be whatever the, the key milestone is.
Excellent, okay, can do.
Sarah, do you have anything?
Uh-huh.
So Karen, would you mind putting us on for discussion at the next meeting? Just a follow-up. Okay, next on the agenda is policies review actions, including policies request for ADA accommodations, cell phone policy, town vehicle policy as well. So, we've been talking about accommodations and, but I don't think we've ever really put the policy into effect, so I'm hoping that this will kind of clarify things going forward, and that if anyone is seeking accommodations, we will certainly do our best to comply. And thank you for Jacob, he comes in ahead of time, he's done other meetings for committees, and so I think this would be a good start to implement this, so that it's really clear to whoever's seeking accommodations.
And if and once approved, the policy obviously could be posted on the website, so it becomes that much more well-known, if you will.
Yeah, informational, yeah.
Exactly.
I don't really have anything else to add, but if, I don't know if you want to deal with it tonight, Beth, and get it done, and Sarah, or do you guys want to put that on the agenda for next week also?
So is the definition of a valid request, one that goes to both email addresses and contains the information in the bullets above?
Correct, yes, it should be sent to both, because obviously Karen could be out, I could be out, but by sending it to both.
Just so it doesn't get missed.
Exactly, so it won't slip through the cracks.
My recommendation would be to make a fillable form that has the required fields to make it a valid request.
Beth, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, your recommendation is what?
To generate a form, whether it's a web form, whether it's a fillable PDF, whether it's a Word document, that, that basically, because it says, you know, it, it's got all these requirements for the request, right? And then it says a valid request, but I don't want to wind up in a situation is that somebody sends a request, they miss one, one notch on the belt of it being a valid request, and somebody tries to split hairs about what's a valid or invalid request, because we're in a world right now where that could be a problem.
Steve, do you mind coming up? Have you seen this?
I did, I spoke with Karen today, because that is a, a policy that would affect all boards, because we currently have to make accommodations for, for ADA requests. And, and all of the, the agendas that most of us post, we have a section at the bottom that says, please contact the clerk, or the chair, or some point of contact 48 hours before the meeting to get accommodations. So this policy looks fine to me in that context, but once we do, I think we should update our agendas to have the instructions to the individuals. But Sarah flagged me down, and I think it comes from the point of, maybe we could streamline this process too, by creating a web form, where if we have just a, something that we can link them to, and we can have it so it'll send a message to town administrator, the other boards have their point of contact on there?
Selectmen, too.
Yeah, Karen and Ron.
Yeah, so we could automate it, so the individual, when they fill out this form, it will contact select board email, town administrator email, and I think that way it makes it easier to get a valid request. There's just one single form that streamlines the process.
Yeah, you might want to include checkboxes for which board it's for, and even, and even, make sure they get like a CC, like they might not be required, but at least they would get a heads up.
Yeah.
Would it be possible to keep Jacob in the loop also, seeing how he's the one that's going to make the sacrifice to come in on that particular day as well?
And then it would give him more warning, because in case it, they, they request it 48 hours in advance, he doesn't hear about it until 12 hours in advance.
Yes, yeah, I was going to say, he's doing the website, the new website, so he'll be making the form, or you, I'm assuming he's going to, you are, I'm going to volunteer to help.
Will you and Jacob get together on this?
Yeah, absolutely.
Beth, are you good with that?
I'm good with that, the only thing is, we need to have a paper version of it as well, because we don't want to exclude people that don't do computers.
Yeah.
Because there's a few folks out there that still don't do computers.
That would be me.
Right.
But if you don't do computers, how, what accommodations are we going to offer, I suppose? But it might, it might not necessarily just be remote meeting, right?
Right, it may not just be remote meeting, it could be physical access to the meeting, or it could be remote meeting and the person calls in on a phone line, because just, you don't have to do a computer, you call into a Zoom, right?
Yeah, that's a fair point. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Steve, I appreciate it. So Beth, once, once Jacob and Steve, do you want to take part and join in with them on that, or do you want to?
I don't think they need me, right? It's all on the, it's all on the piece of paper, and they're, they're technical experts. If they need any consult, I can be available, so, so call me if you need me.
Jeff, do you mind coming up?
I'm not sure if this is on point, but it's for, in our specific committee case, committee attendance in person, I don't know if this would fall under ADA, but we just told one of our members how the triple bypass is not able to come to meetings, and I was wondering if some way to accommodate remotely, whether that be Zoom, or phone, or.
So the first thing that you all have to do under open meeting law is to vote as a committee to authorize remote participation, and they can't be part of the quorum, but they can be part of the meeting? So, so you all as a committee can vote to authorize hybrid meetings and allow people to participate remotely?
But they can't, they can't be part of the quorum, because right now, we're having trouble with quorum.
Yeah, I don't think state law allows them to be part of the quorum.
Okay.
Is the only problem that you run into.
All right, thank you.
Come on up, Steve.
Thank you, Jeff.
I think we should double check the law on that, because things did change with COVID, for mass general law does have, they've extended it to this year as well, they've extended it year after year for the past several years, where you can now have remote meetings with remote participation, so I'd say check the law again.
Yeah, didn't the, didn't the conservation commission get dinged for, I think I, I think I was online, and we got, we tried, somebody filed a complaint, and the AG said, no, it was a quorum, even though I was online.
I agree, in that instance, yes.
I'm pretty sure they determined it wasn't a complaint.
Yeah, actually, I thought they had, I thought, I thought it had to be either, I thought that had to be either fully remote, or I didn't think the hybrid.
I believe the chair cannot be remote, the chair has to be present, but I do believe you can have the, one of the quorum members be remote.
Okay, so you're right, you're probably right, probably has changed.
Yeah, check the law, it's a, it's a COVID thing that's been extended for years now, and it was extended just last May, so, let's just confirm, because I think we can have hybrid remote participation for, for committee members, for the public body to have a forum.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think it may require you, though, then have it as a hybrid meeting and have it open that way for the public. Yeah.
So Karen, we'll, we'll revisit this once the form's completed. Then we'll go on to the cell phone policy. Ron, where did you get this draft from? What town was this?
I stole, I believe it might have been from Stowe. This is what I would say the most restrictive of what I've seen, and I figure I'd start at the most restrictive, and if the board chose to, it was easier to throw things over board than to include them.
Yeah, number four, I want to strike the word turned off.
Yeah, I have, I have turned off exactly, I already marked it out, so.
I'm okay with silenced, or on vibrate, whatever, silenced, whatever you want to call it, but yeah, I don't like the word turned off. And do we have any MP, like, MP3 player?
I don't know that some of this applies.
Yeah, and I, I kind of have a problem with that, because we don't tell them that they can't have a radio in their workspace that they turn off when they pick up a call. You know, that's, to me, that's a little excessive.
Is it strictly entirely number five?
I mean, I think it's pretty obvious that you shouldn't be playing video games during business hours, if you're doing that, that's a separate problem.
Yeah.
It's not a cell phone issue, it's a character issue.
So Brenda, our tax collector, brought up a few things, she will frequently use her cell phone for getting back to people, or, so. I don't know that, that we can separate an elected official from a regular employee, but I, I just, I don't really think that we have a big problem to really use the most
So, and similarly, right, personal text messaging during regular business hours is strictly prohibited, but does that include breaks or lunch?
No. No, it says right on the top, in the very top, it talks about breaks and lunch, right?
Yeah, employees are encouraged to make any personal calls outside of regular work hours, or on established break periods.
Right, so if anything, it, I would just, I would take out three and put any personal calls or personal text messaging in, in the first line, so that it's, it doesn't appear that text messaging is more restrictive than phone calls, because.
Yeah, because it's saying you can't text, but.
But it's okay to make a call.
But you're encouraged to not make a call.
Ron's going to get himself in trouble again for supplying this one.
The more I look at it, I'm like, ugh.
I'm not surprised that there's things.
So, is there, other than, so I think it's, I think the six and seven are important, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I think, I think the purpose for the, in my head, the purpose for the policy is really more six and seven, unless we think we have.
Liability issues more than anything.
Unless we think we have a rampant issue with people.
No, no, our employees are good.
Our employees are doing their work.
Very good, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So, I think.
Do you want to just put six and seven? I'm good with that, but I think we should have something.
I think, I think it's basically one, six, and seven, right?
Yeah, I was going to say one, six, and seven.
Encouraged to make personal calls, you know what, if, I hate to put it this way, if your spouse has a medical issue and the doctor's office is calling back, and you need to take your break at an off time, right, it, it doesn't make sense to have some sort of, if we don't have a problem, let's not make a problem.
Yeah.
Right? So I think the term encouraged means if somebody starts to abuse it, it gives us some room to say, hey, your cell phone usage is inappropriate, right? I think that's a department head call. I think that's a department head call. I think that language would give the department head or yourself the room to say what is, where the line is on that. I think the rest of it is, I think we do one, six and seven.
Yeah.
Maybe one, one, four, six and seven, like have it on vibrate so that you're not like sitting there with somebody and, you know, your T-Mobile ringer goes off.
So agreed, I think we should rewrite it for one, four, six and seven. We have the policy in place and it just covers us.
Yeah.
Perfect. So we'll just, we'll rewrite it and approve it at the next meeting then? Who do you want to go now?
I mean.
I'll entertain a motion if you want.
I'll make a motion that we have the policy reflect one, four, six and seven as written.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the vehicle use policy, I have not had an opportunity to read this over, and I don't want to keep the meeting going. I would like to see this put on another night and we hit it next week, or in two weeks.
I'm fine with that because again, this is not an area that I see as having an issue.
Are we meeting in two weeks? Two weeks, right?
Two weeks.
Two weeks?
Unless you guys.
I'm not gonna be here next week.
I will, okay.
Right, because it's supposed to be next week, but we're gonna push it, is it the first and the third? I thought it was the first and the third.
I don't know, Chairman's bar.
Well, I think it's whatever we, whenever we.
I mean, historically, it's been first and third.
Yeah.
All right.
So what, do we have an extra week this month, basically?
I think it's a five week, July's a five week month, so this should be.
July, yeah, right. July, yeah.
All right, next meeting.
Okay, all right.
All right. Number five, which is number really six on mine, but insurance savings, town vehicles equipped with GPS units. Ron has been speaking to a provider for GPS units, so I'm gonna let Ron take the lead.
Correct. I mean, there's a bunch of vendors, one of those, I'm considering, considering, lots of discussions, as well as the downloads, the availability, and for that, it's kind of a, as far as the utilization is now, they have a lot of small devices, vendor law, information for, the buyer, part of watching, installing, so they allow that, so it's like, free, I would try, right, and the buyer, it's got, they have a letter, who, from the source, the cost, the actual device installation is free, it's free, it's free to touch.
Subscription.
This period would be, that's for the GPS, our classic tracking, plus, for the information, is $100 per month, so, the market, looking at some, prices, we're looking at $300 or less. One of the benefits is mine does not, currently, with the Spirit, the model, it's offered, and more, set his health on, three, four, five, options, that will, like, our, $1500 a year. However, in discussions with the live, they would not tie off discount policies, add discount costs for, this is, it's probably also, you, no reason at this point to think that they will leave it, it's not, it's not, but, and we do a little, a percent, it's, we have four, five, thousand dollars, so, the, the, the GPS, offering, you got, well, granted, it's, it's, advice, I guess, I think, not, it'll show this credit on, on, they, they just, but there are all kinds of, for, driving out of town, flat mats, it's, one of the things is, also, not only, what, I, before, engine.
Engine hours?
And engine hours, which, well, a percent is, exactly, so, I, I.
Well, ambulance, highway trucks, police cruisers, things of that nature, so, so engine hours are important to get the oil changes done.
Absolutely.
Versus miles.
If you go on a 5,000 miles, when your engine, anyway, hours, and.
Yeah, 3,000 hours, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Exactly, it's really not gonna be accurate, so, they're also, like, one of the things that kept coming up as those, is the smoke plots.
Is what?
The smoke plots. It is absolutely instrumental, when people also complain, saying, normally, I, like, and literally, in an hour, sent it to, in, on, wet water, to say, well, the, the doctor's man, for, you know, and, you know, that, so, and they said, that is, definitely, they take it off, the customer, the, 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 so, it doesn't, we, we, technically, don't have any specifics, one thing, one, but, we, we take out, part of the expenses, is the, one thing, with vehicles, we have, so, that, that, certainly, um.
Okay. Do you have any immediate thoughts, or there's no, no real reason to make a decision on this tonight, but I would encourage everyone to think about it and we'll revisit this as well.
Yeah.
We can't, we can't even begin to put it into place until the new fiscal year, so I think it makes sense to think about it and see how we want to proceed.
So other than the somewhat objective evidence that we've done snow plowing on a particular road, what else does this solve for?
Yeah, one of the things would be safety concerns. If you have a vehicle that's gone off the road, we don't know where it is, this will tell you literally exactly where it is, things along those lines. As I indicated, also, it gathers a lot of information about the vehicle and its movement and so on and so forth. In fact, one of the other things you could do from a snowplow perspective is they each have routes, and you can tell if someone is basically hitting the wrong route. So it'd be very easy to decide what way, you know, truck, truck one is, is often, they're not doing their correct routes.
Okay, does this company do the speed monitoring as well?
Yes, it has ability to do speed monitoring. And the other thing is, they'll actually, in their portal, they have a dynamic mapping. And literally, Kyle, at any given point during a snowstorm, would be able to look and see a physical diagram where all his snowplows are currently. It was, it was a pretty powerful port, port they have.
Okay, was it, did they just present to you, or did you have the department heads as well?
No, I just took a quick look at it, just to kind of get a feel for, for it, and I can see why it was highly recommended.
Kyle, how's that sound to you for snowplow? And I know it's a pretty small community, but does that seem like it would be helpful in Europe?
Be great.
Okay. All right, so we'll, Karen, do you mind putting this on the next agenda as well?
Yeah.
The next agenda is getting long already. All right, resignations of Town Hall Improvement Committee, Donald Taft and Mary Lou Knight.
The motion we accept with regrets.
Second.
Any discussion?
We've already covered that territory.
Yep.
I'm sorry.
I think we've already covered the territory.
We did, but, you know, I will extend the olive branch again to Don. If he wants to work on those windows with me, it's a top priority of mine, I'd be more than willing to have your, your help, so. All in favor? Aye. Landfill transfer operations. Ron, I'm gonna let you take the lead because you spoke with the Board of Health Chair, so bring us up to speed.
Yeah, I spoke to Maureen in a decent amount of detail with regards to the transfer station and currently what's going on with transfer station. Briefly, some of the activities associated with the transfer station are things along the lines of state grants, state regulations, compliance with different state standards, things along those lines. And from Maureen's perspective, she understands that that would stay with the Board of Health, so she has no, no qualms keeping that with the Board of Health, she thinks it, it makes perfect sense. Her, I guess her desire was to offload the day-to-day operations, if you will. And for that, she included things such as maybe personnel decisions. One of the things would be payroll, that would be part of the day-to-day operations, payments, turnovers, things along those lines, and then other just kind of normal operational issues, you know, cleaning and clearing the, the transfer station area, things along those lines, different contracts. So in talking to Maureen, there's obviously, there's several activities and tasks involved. So one of the things I think, and I'll ask the board if you want me to go through with this, is to sit down with Maureen, actually delineate exactly what those tasks are, and then come up with a proposal of this would side with Board of Health, this would side with, you know, select board, designee, or something along those lines. So that way, at least we, we know what the full activities are, and then we can parse out who's doing what, so that it's a clear line of delineation.
Okay, so I want to make another announcement to do with the landfill recycle center. Jimmy has been a long-term employee down there, and he's developed some medical issues, so he's gonna be there for maybe the next week or two, but then he's gonna be taking some time off. So I think this kind of precipitated some of that as well. They're in the midst of scrambling to try to find someone quickly to replace him on a temporary basis with the hopes that he would get well quickly and come back, but that's not certain. So he's been very diligent, he's been able to pretty much run that place for quite some time, and speaking to the other two Board of Health members, they don't have the time to pick up the extra slack, so they're looking for help from the select board and town administrator, may even lean on the highway for a little bit, but we're gonna, in order to keep the operations going down there the way they have been, we're gonna have to make some changes to at least help the board.
I have some questions. One of my questions is, so when Pam was, I don't know if it was Pam or when it was Brianna that was here, but she was doing, I don't know if Pam did it, but she was at least doing the transfer station payroll and transfer station turnovers and stuff, so I guess my question is, is how many hours does that take? If you can find out from Maureen. And at what point did the clerk stop doing it? Two is also my question.
I think Maureen's done it for quite some time.
So did we take those hours out of the clerk when Maureen took it over?
I think.
Or we just left it in the clerk's hours?
I think they were still in there, but I think Maureen had been doing it and is just simply feeling overwhelmed. So now she has a new clerk, and she said she doesn't see a problem with the new clerk picking up what she left on, so that, that would be some help as well.
And once again, I can delineate that as tasks, payroll, turnovers, things like that, Board of Health clerk. We all agree that makes sense, then we can make that assignment.
The other thing is, they meet tomorrow evening, so I believe it's on their agenda as well, so maybe after their meeting, you could kind of have a little huddle with Maureen on Thursday and kind of put it together.
Yep, can do.
All right. Come on up.
Just a quick question, in this Board of Health discussion, has the subject of the leaf and brush come up as a topic for, for discussion? And let me, let me say why I asked. A couple of weeks ago, Highway was asked to go down and move brush and leaves and, and lawn litter from the compost area. And so they went down and moved the brush and the leaves and the grass. That was quite a bit of work that they did, there were numerous loads that went on. And my question is, if, is this one of, so this is one of the topics that the Highway Advisory was gonna put on its agenda for next, our next meeting, to discuss how to handle, accept, or manage the recyclable, meaning composting leaves and so on. So my question is, is this part of anything that she was discussing in reference to the transfer station?
I'll speak, I'll speak to this because I don't think it was last Friday, was it two Fridays ago, Kyle? We went down and did the work. So I brought an excavator to the recycle center. Kyle met me there at 7:15 in the morning with two 10-wheelers, and I want to say we hauled out eight to 12 loads of material.
Right.
Roughly, and it took us two hours. I donated my time and my services, it worked really well, and in speaking with Kyle, we talked about doing some type of composting as a program for Brookfield. East Brookfield has done it for many years, it's a great service, people are able to go pick up compost. The Highway Department would be required to flip the leaves, flip the brush every 30 days roughly over the summer months, the winter months, there's no need to flip it. And probably after six months, you start making a product that people can actually use. So he's been extremely busy, I've been busy, so we haven't been able to meet up yet. In speaking today, we talked about tentatively meeting down at Herbert's Pit, and one is kind of cleaning up a mess that's been accumulating for many years, the last three to five years it's been accumulating. And I think it would help us get better standards with the DEP for our water wells that are there and kind of.
So you're talking about doing that at the pit on Herbert Road?
Yes.
Okay, that's the reason why I brought this up, is because there's state mandates from DEP on how that has to be managed. It's not just bringing the compost down there, it has to be a site evaluation by Mass DEP, they have to approve it. You're aware of the fact that the land there is not Brookfield? You know, that's East Brookfield property?
Which portion is East Brookfield? Is the entire complex East Brookfield?
Pretty much.
Really? I didn't realize that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm just asking that.
So you bring up a good point, why don't we all get together and?
Well, I think it may be a wetlands. There are, there are any number of questions that I have about utilizing that site for composting or brush and what we're going to accept and how we're going to management. One of the things that needs to happen is that can't just be something that's open for anybody to go in. It has to be ours, it has, by DEP standards, it says it has to be monitored. The regulation happens to be CMI 310, Section 19 and 16. So I would suggest that before you really consider doing that, that you look at what the requirements are and what's involved, both in management and for the site itself. That may even be a wetland site. You have to look at the flood maps, there's a whole bunch of things, but the first step is that any site where you're doing composting has to be, you have to send in a registration to the state to get it approved, also requires a water supply, which there isn't down there. Anyway, just, if you're gonna have that discussion, the only reason I bring it up is because I had this discussion with Kyle, because I was there when, when he was asked to go down and move the stuff. And so I, I said to Kyle, we'll put this on our next agenda. So if that's the kind of discussion, I think it needs to involve a whole bunch of people, not just Board of Health, Highway, possibly Water, and maybe Conservation, Planning Board, there's, there's any number of boards. I would suggest you look at the state regulation before you move too forward to that.
I think.
Thank you.
Right away from the onset, I will make sure you stay in the loop, you're the Chair of the Water.
Yep.
Commission, yep, so I'll make sure that you stay in the loop as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Number eight, discussion Town Hall Improvement, charter versus common practice. Beth, that's all you.
I think we've covered it already.
Covered it, okay. Harry? Covered it, okay. Alright, so I believe we're at number one, fiscal year 26, annual appointments. So how would you like to proceed with this? Someone going to make a motion to each one or how do you want to?
Should we just make?
Okay, do you want me to do a formal speed rating? Because that way, if anybody has any questions or concerns about anybody.
I read the list. I'm all set.
Read the list?
Yeah, the only person, Town Hall Improvement Committee, Mary Lou is up. She resigned, so I assume she, I assume she does not want to be reappointed. But everybody else.
Should I reconsider who else?
Yeah, that might be a sign that, you know, she wasn't supposed to leave.
So, do you want to make number the pages and make a motion for each page? Or how do you want to do that, Beth? It might be cleaner to do each page and just take the pages.
Not unlike how Bill handles the budget for a town meeting, kind of look at a page. Are there any questions about that page? If not, just we'll approve it.
Alright.
Alright, I'll give you a motion for the first page as printed of appointments for FY 26.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion to approve the appointments as written, page two for FY 2026.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion to appoint as written with the omission of Mary Lou Knight for Town Hall Improvement Committee for page three of the appointments.
I don't think it's on three, is it, Beth?
Yeah, for her, it's on three.
For me, it's on three.
Oh.
I have a special copy. My copy the same as everybody else's?
No, everybody else's.
Do I need to go back and identify the names that are different? Okay.
It's not on mine, but that's okay.
Okay, that's okay.
Okay, so it's going to be based off of, we're going to, we're going to make this the voting copy.
Official copy.
And I will hand it back to Karen. So do we have a motion and a second on that?
Second, oh, there was a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then, motion to approve the fourth page of appointments as written.
Second.
I'm feeling abstained. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Here's the voting copy for the appointments.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, wait.
Oh, wait, we.
Did I miss?
This is on there?
Eleven. Right?
Oh, yes, yeah, you have that.
Oh, end of year transfer, that's right. Sorry about that. So this is, this somehow Ron did not get his paperwork in for the annual town meeting and the budget. Somehow Jeff Ron dropped the ball here, but it's an end of year transfer for a contractual change in Ron's status, so. Yes. Yeah, exactly. Yeah. So.
In discussions.
Now the first year is down, we're going to be out soon for next year also.
In discussions with. In, in discussions with the town accountant, that's exactly what happened. She thought it was fiscal year to fiscal year, so she, she missed the May 15th. But now, it's on her, right? I, I think it's because Beth knew. She, she had a good contract and she only made a sign it before I, I figured it out.
So, so I'm going to make a motion.
Motion.
I'm sorry?
Do we make, do we need to make a motion to accept the transfer?
Yes.
Yep.
That was my motion.
As presented, I guess.
Yeah, as presented on the sheet, yeah.
Alright.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Was there a second?
Yep, Beth said, I thought Sarah seconded.
No, I made the motion.
Oh, did you second it, Beth?
Uh, I'll second it. I do want to just do, make sure that we, in the interest of transparency, cover what is going where and to whom, right? So the first line is $500 from full-time wages to overtime wages. Second one is accessor expenses to accessor wages, so it's within department for $3,000. Highway, full-time wages to custodian wages, $500. Group insurance to technology, $5,000. Group insurance to electricity, $3,000. Town accountant expenses to town administrator salary, $395.96. So we've got a motion, a second.
Alright, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oh.
This is just a, a point of clarification, because when I got this last one in addition to the previous two for the advisory committee to vote on, I was a little concerned because there was so many of them flowing through compared to previous years. And she, and Laurie, when I spoke to her, said there were a lot of unexpected expenses and she thought this was, this year was possibly an aberration over other years and not to be concerned because I thought maybe there was an issue with the, the budget process itself for some reason. And she said she didn't think so. But again, this, hopefully will just be like a one-time, a lot of things were sort of unexplained or, or, you know, unanticipated, legal, the wildfires, et cetera, with the, with the fire. So I, I just wanted to go on record in stating that because I had the same question. But, so I think we're okay.
Great, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Harry?
Motion to adjourn.
Beth, Sarah made a motion to adjourn. I'll second. All in favor? Or any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I think motion to adjourn is the only one that you don't get any discussion on.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. Yeah, I could just go right into it.
Why? What happens if somebody never wanted to leave this place?
I, but I think by Robert's rules, but I think by Robert's rules, it's the one motion that is not up for discussion.
Why don't you sign this one so it's all on one page?
Hey, I'll sign these all tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll come in tomorrow.
Alright, very good. Or you can take them off the episode.
No, I'll go some.
Alright, okay.
Or we'll draw on them.
In this day and age, you probably should use something like, make like the wind and blow because, because if you say blow this joint, they're going to take you seriously.
Good night.
I, I realize that, but you understand what I mean. It's just the world today, right? So.